We welcome to everybody tonight and we are going to begin with the oath of office for our newly elected officials. To administer the oath, we have White Marsh's own, the Honorable Kelly Wall from the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas here to administer the oath. Thank you so much, Kelly, for being here. And I guess we will begin with myself.
Repeat after me. I Laura Boyle Nestor.
I Laura Boyle Nestor.
Do swear that I will support, swear that I will support, obey and defend, obey and defend, the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And then I will discharge the duties.
And then I will discharge the duties.
Of supervisor in White Marsh Township.
Of supervisor in White Marsh Township.
Montgomery County.
Montgomery County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. Jaycee?
Yep. Okay. Repeat after me. I, say your name.
I, Jaycee Toll.
Do swear that I will support.
Do swear that I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And then I will discharge the duties.
And then I will discharge the duties.
Of supervisor in White Marsh Township.
Of supervisor in White Marsh Township.
Montgomery County.
Montgomery County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
I, Vincent Manuel.
Do swear that I will support.
Do swear that I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And then I will discharge the duties.
And then I will discharge the duties.
Of supervisor in White Marsh Township, Montgomery County.
Of supervisor in White Marsh Township, Montgomery County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
If you could stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome once again. We are really excited to have everybody here tonight. And can you hear me okay? It sounds quiet.
Up yours.
Awesome. Good. Um, we're gonna move forward and do I have a motion to nominate Michael Drausner as temporary chair for the Board of Supervisors?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. It's like a nice turn. So I'm in charge now? Is that how this works? Do I have a motion to select Richard L. Mellor Jr. as the temporary secretary?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ooh, hold on. Do I have a motion to elect Laura Boyle Nestor as Chair of the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Laura. And I'll hand you the gavel.
I'm not a big gavel person, so we'll use this for the beginning of the meetings, maybe? Maybe a little bit.
We'll work it out.
Okay. All right, moving on. Do I have a motion to nominate Fran McCusker as Vice Chair of the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Fran.
And in your new role, would you mind reading the announcements?
Sure. Work began today on Stettin Avenue between Flower Town Road and the entrance to the Reserve at Creekside. Work is expected to take roughly three weeks. During that time, Stettin Avenue will be closed from 7:00 a.m. until 3:30 p.m. The township thanks our residents and motorists for their patience. Please help support the William Jeans Library 2020 formal wear drive by donating generally used dresses, those menswear, jewelry, and accessories. Donations are being accepted at the library until February 29th. Contact details are available on the township website. Christmas trees are being collected by J.P. Mascaro on Wednesdays with yard waste. Trees must have ornaments, lights, and tinsel removed. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. So we're gonna move forward to appointments. Do I have a motion to appoint Richard L. Mellor Jr. as Township Manager and Secretary by approving his appointment agreement with the White Marsh Township?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back. Do I have a motion to appoint Nathan Cretidon as Finance Director and Treasurer?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Welcome, Nate.
Thank you.
Where is he? Very good. Do I have a motion to appoint Christopher P. Ward as Chief of Police?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Welcome back. Do I have a motion to appoint Charles L. Guttenplan as zoning officer?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Where am I standing? Thank you. Do I have a motion to appoint Sean P. Calkeny as our Township Solicitor?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to appoint Gilmore Associates as Township Engineer?
So moved.
Second.
Excellent. Um, I'd like to just pause for a second here and let everybody know, to bring everybody up to speed, this has been a big fall for us. Uh, the township issued an RFQ and received eight applications for engineering firms. The Board at a public meeting last Friday interviewed four firms. Each were extremely qualified engineering firms with experience in representing surrounding municipalities. We believe Gilmore and Associates is the best qualified to serve as Township Engineer going forward based on their comprehensive professional engineering and consulting services. We would like to thank T&amp;M and Associates for their 10 years of service and dedication as the engineering firm representing White Marsh Township. Any other Board comments? Any public comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next are our vacancy board appointments, so I will make the motion and then if we can each as a board say our name of our vacancy board appointee individually and then we'll do it together, one at a time. Yeah, not all at last together.
One, two, three, go.
Do I have a motion to appoint, for myself, Sheri Patracas as my vacancy board member?
Christopher Seleki.
Sarah Earlbaum.
Ari Grace.
Patrick Duran.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And the next, we have various boards and commissions and we're gonna do this as one motion, but I will read everybody individually, so bear with me. And just to be clear, these are reappointments. We will be making new appointments at a future date soon. All right, so do I have a motion to appoint Robert Bessine for the zoning hearing board, five-year term ending in December 31st, 2024. Sheri Glantz-Patchen for the planning commission, a four-year term ending December 31st, 2023. Dave Shula, planning commission, a four-year term ending December 31st, 2023. Joanne Crawford, Park and Rec Board, four-year term ending December 31st, 2023. Jonathan Reisberg, the authority, for a five-year term ending December 31st, 2024. Dara Nassider, the library board, a three-year term ending December 31st, 2022. Diane Smith-Hobin, library board, a three-year term ending December 31st, 2022. Gordon Geislin, environmental advisory board, a three-year term ending December 31st, 2022. Luann Merkel, advisory, environmental advisory board, a three-year term ending December 31st, 2022. Christopher Lane, open space committee, a three-year term ending December 31st, 2022. Mark Creighton, media communications advisory board, three-year term ending December 31st, 2021. Wally Harris, building code board of appeals, a four-year term ending December 31st, 2023. And Amber Corbin, building code board of appeals, four-year term ending December 31st, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have on our agenda a public hearing for the liquor license transfer. We have had a recent update on that. If, Patrick, would you mind giving us an update?
I would be happy to. Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, at this time, while it is noted on the agenda to have a public hearing for a liquor license transfer application for 10 East Ridge Pike Drive food stores, unfortunately tonight, that public hearing is going to be canceled. It's going to be canceled because pursuant to the Liquor Control Act, the municipality must advertise notice of that hearing two times in the newspaper. While the municipality had requested that it be advertised twice with the newspaper, for some reason, we keep the newspaper only advertised once rather than twice. Our office has been in communication with the applicant's attorney, informed the applicant's attorney of this mishap by the newspaper, and requested that an extension be granted so that the public hearing could be continued or be held at the next regularly scheduled meeting, which they had no objection.
Excellent. Well, I thank you both for catching this and making sure that things are done correctly.
Thank you.
Excellent. Just a brief pause, does everybody? No need to have family members sit through the entire meeting. Okay, we're gonna move on to ordinances. Or minutes, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from December 12th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Obey.
Obey.
Very good. Um, aye, motion carries. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2019-01, amending the display of wild animal, animals' ordinance to prohibit rodeos in White Marsh Township?
So moved.
Second.
Board comment?
I think you should turn to them.
Or, yeah.
Thank you, Chair Nestor.
Yes.
We have before us this evening is amendment to our display of wild animals ordinance. This was an ordinance that the Board adopted back in September of 2019 that prohibited the display of wild animals and various exotic animals in White Marsh Township. Since that time and at that meeting, one of the items that was not included in that ordinance was having rodeos in the township. The Board asked that that be something that would be included. There was an ordinance that was put together by the Solicitor's Office to prohibit rodeos and amend the display of wild animals ordinance. At your last meeting, the Board authorized the advertisement of that ordinance, which was advertised. And before you is the public hearing and consideration for the amendment to prohibit rodeos in White Marsh Township, amending the display of wild animals ordinance.
Thank you for that update. Is there any Board comment? Public comment?
We have a public comment. Good evening. My name is Damian.
If you don't mind, can you come up to the microphone?
Sure. My voice is loud enough to get hearing about you. We're gonna have to hear you louder now.
It's important because people are on TV watching and the microphone picks up the voice a little bit better so they can hear it clearly.
Say your name.
Good evening. My name is Damian Sammons. Hello. These, five gentlemen, dear, if you would stand up right now. These men are the men from the Lulu Shriners. They are five of a thousand people who are all members of the shrine. I myself am a member of the shrine. You guys, take a seat. My question is for this Board. How many other groups in this township conduct rodeos? Besides the Shriners? How many other groups conduct a circus? Besides the Shriners? For the last 60 years, as I'm told, the Shriners have run a circus here in the township. They've received permits every year. They receive licensing to have the circus. They've had inspectors come to all the animals and they've passed every single inspection. It is unconstitutional to pass a law that is directed at one particular group. It is called a bill of attainder. Attainer. It is one of the oldest elements of our American Constitution. Three of you up here tonight took an oath to uphold the Constitution. Michael Drausner, we've been in court together. You're an attorney. I know one of the other people, you're an attorney.
I've taken the same oath, so as Fran does, not tonight. Of course, right.
We've all taken the same oath, on numerous occasions, to uphold the Constitution. A bill of attainder directed at one particular group is unconstitutional and it cannot be upheld in report of law. These men came here today because, one, they received notice of the fact that you guys were gonna vote in September, the day of, hours before, before they could bring call of a bunch of guys from around the shrine to come and speak. And that vote happened without them here. And tonight, you have another addendum to this bill of attainder directed just at them. There's no other group in this township that conducts a rodeo or circus. And you've sworn an oath to uphold the Constitution. And I want you all to know, this moment, you were on notice that we will be in communication with you, that these acts, this ordinance, is unconstitutional at its base and there's no support for it whatsoever in the law. There's no support for it in fact and there's no support in law. And that conclude my statement for the moment.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments?
Eli Wicks, Seven Way Field Drive. I was here when you passed the ordinance prohibiting circus and I raised some concerns about an issue of beekeeping, which was lost over and you voted on it anyway. This issue came before you because it's very emotional to the people who brought it here, okay? This was brought by PETA. PETA constantly is protesting circuses of all types and that's, to me, not really the issue. The issue is, an ordinance in White Marsh Township is supposed to be enacted to protect the health, welfare, and property of its residents. And this does not do that. This amendment that you're talking about tonight doesn't do that and neither did the other ordinance. And I would propose to you, since you've done this recently, that you might table it, at the very least, and consider pulling back that original ordinance because it did only affect this one group. I've lived here since 1996. There has been no other circus in White Marsh other than a Lulu temple. I don't go. I'm not a big circus person. I happen to agree about the handling of animals, but that's not really the issue here. The issue, as my understanding is, for Lulu, is that's a big fundraiser for them. They raise money for the shrine and much of that money goes to children, to their children's hospitals all around the country. And what would have been nice is if the PETA group or the Board of Supervisors would have gone, got everybody together, and said, hey, let's figure out a better way that we can make this work so that you guys could raise the money that you need to do for your fundraising efforts. So I wholeheartedly advise you to not vote on this and to consider taking back the other amendment.
Eli, what do you mean by you agree about the handling of animals? You use that term. I don't understand the phrase. What do you agree about?
I agree that wild animals shouldn't be part of a circus, but that's not really the issue, right?
Well, it's one of the issues, right?
No, it's not an issue because nowhere else in White Marsh Township is there a circus. There's only a circus in one place. There are people that have their dogs on electric fences. PETA is also against electric, the use of electric fences for having dogs kept at homes. There are other organizations that are too. Are we gonna come up with an ordinance for that as well?
But you agree that it is dangerous to the public to have wild animals on display? That's what you were saying, correct?
No, that's not what I was saying. I don't know that it's dangerous to the public. I would not do that to a non-domestic animal. That's my opinion, okay? But what if, what if they had a circus that was with dogs and cats? Would that not be okay? Either way, that's not really the issue. The issue is that they, this is a group that was singled out. This is not a problem throughout White Marsh. And it's really an ordinance that was done purely from an emotional standpoint, without much thought and discussion with the group that is the only people that have a circus.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, I disagree that it was done without much thought. I think it was done with a lot of thought and a lot of deliberation. The intent is not just focused at Lulu Shriners. We understand it affects them primarily, but it also affects other people that might wanna have a rodeo or a circus at Victory Fields or at Miles Park or anywhere else in our township. I'm leaning back because I feel like my mic's really hot, but it's still loud enough, right? So, I mean, we thought about it. We deliberated on it. We had multiple meetings. We reviewed video evidence, photographic evidence from all over the country. And right around the time that we finally voted on it, we saw a video, I think it was from Texas, where a bull got loose. I don't remember if it was a rodeo or parade, and it was, it was running around the town square filled with hundreds of people, children, adults. It was dangerous. It was scary and it was unnecessary. We understand that it has an effect on the Lulu temple and they're gonna have to find other ways to fundraise. But as we all know, those of us that are active in nonprofits and certainly in government, there are many ways to raise funds. You know, using wild animals, exotic animals on display is not the only way to raise money. And I'm confident with thousands of members, hard workers, committed people that care about their community, that they'll find other ways to raise money, support the organization and all the good deeds that they do.
Any other, any other Board comments?
So, question, has, have the constitutional issues that were raised tonight previously been considered?
Yes. I mean, we certainly spoke with our Solicitor's Office about the ordinance.
The ordinance was prepared by the Solicitor's Office and reviewed by the Solicitor.
All right, I'll ask Mr. Sammons. Are you aware of any case law, Mr. Sammons, declaring this type of law unconstitutional? In other words, were there any other states where they sought to exclude the public display of wild animals or rodeos and it was later ruled unconstitutional? I understand there may be analogous cases under the Bill of Attainer law, but anything regarding this specific issue?
No one's fought it yet. Doesn't mean it's not gonna be fought soon. So, what I want you to note, and you should add on the record here, is that all the places you cited where there was a problem with animals, wasn't here. No evidence here.
But we shouldn't wait till some kid gets run over by a bull, should we, Damian? I'm gonna wait for my kid to get, you know, trampled by an elephant and then say, oh, now we have a problem? Don't we have to be proactive and say, hey, there's a potential issue here and we should do something about it?
That's exactly my understanding. This is proactive.
There's never been an issue here at this, in this township, in any capacity whatsoever. For all the animals that have ever come through Lulu Shrine, they've all been vetted, they've all been looked at, they've all been, they've all been shown to be healthy by the vets. There are people who create affidavits for, for the Shriners right now to explain just exactly that. There's never been an incident here in any capacity whatsoever where there's been a bull at the temple, at the Lulu Shrine temple, at all.
Were there elephants?
There are elephants.
Do you think an elephant could trample kids if it ran into a crowd of kids?
Your abstract concepts of what may or may not happen are built on fiction. And that's, and that's what I'm saying.
These things can happen, right?
You cannot create a law built on fiction, things that haven't happened, things that aren't even likely to happen, and then single out a one particular group under the Constitution. It is absolutely unconstitutional. It's illegal. Everything you cited, on the record, well, you say it, that it was primarily to affect the Lulu Shriners, which we know is unconstitutional. And everything you cited had some abstract video that you saw from some other place that was not here and was not built on facts that would occur for Lulu Shrine in any capacity. And they've been here doing this circus for over 60 years.
Damian, if drunk drivers are killing people in California and Arizona and Nevada and Missouri and Oklahoma and Ohio, in Pennsylvania, assuming we had no drunk driving accidents, would we, would it be illegal to ban drunk driving?
That is not a bill of attainder, which is what you guys have done here.
But the point is, just because, just because tragedies have happened elsewhere, doesn't mean we should ignore them here. We can still use them as, as a reason to make a decision.
You're making a false analogy here and you know it. It's not a good argument.
I don't know it.
Because it's not the argument that is, the argument that is at hand right now. You cannot get over the fact that what you've created is a law specifically targeted toward one person based on one fiction.
Madam Chair, if I should interject here, I apologize. I would just note that this is a law of general applicability. It would apply to anybody within the, within the township as identified by Dr. Drausner. So certainly our office is. So certainly our office is going to believe that it's a bill of attainor or that it creates a constitutional issue with regard to that matter because it is a law of general applicability. It does not call out any specific entity or group on how they operate or how they don't operate, it will apply to anyone coming into the township.
I'd like to make a motion to table to take it under further consideration.
And second the motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will table this to a future meeting. Thank you all for attending. We will look into this further. We're good. Okay, moving on to resolutions. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-01 granting, oh, I'm sorry, should I make that?
It's 2020.
2020, and should it be '01 because we're not doing the liquor license?
'01, yes.
Okay. Let's start over. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-01 establishing the Board of Supervisors' meeting schedule and format for 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you Chair Nester. No change to our meeting schedule here, it will be the second and fourth Thursday of the month. We will also have four workshop meetings, they will be Thursday, February 6th, Thursday, February of May 7th, Thursday on the 6th, and Thursday, November 5th, beginning at 6:00. In this meeting, the regular meetings will be, public meetings will be at 7:00. So no change in our meeting schedule for 2020.
Excellent. Any board comment? Any public comment? Yes.
I'm just interested in knowing about the consistency of the time. Why can't all of these Board of Supervisor meetings be at 7 o'clock, including tonight's meeting? I understand this one is in the charter and that would obviously require a change, but why not have all meetings at 7 o'clock?
This is the, are you referring to other meetings? This is the only, oh, you mean like the workshops?
The workshops.
Yeah, I don't know if there's historical reason. I know for me, you know, we spend so many nights here, it's nice to have a different night, that we can be here a little bit earlier and hopefully get home to see our families a little bit. So I know, I appreciate having a little bit of a change of the schedule. I don't know if there's any historical significance of how that started or why that is.
I'd rather have them at 2:00. The evening is more appropriate.
Is that something you guys want to...
Are they all at 6:00 or were they...
Or seven?
Just the workshop meetings.
Were the workshop meetings at 6:00 last year or were they 5:00?
Six.
Okay.
6:00. So they start a little bit earlier and then usually last night. No, 6:00 is good.
Six.
And what about this meeting? Why has this started at 8:00?
Because you identified it's part of the charter.
All right, okay, but is there a reason for that?
The fathers of the charter put it at 8:00.
Would you consider changing that to 7:00?
You'd have to put it to a vote of the public to change it.
To the public? Okay, like a referendum?
Like a referendum.
Okay. All right. Are you able to discuss the other boards and commission meetings or is that not part of this?
That's not part of...
Terms of their schedule?
Yeah, you're talking about like EAV and planning and all that, yeah, that's not part, these are the township Board of Supervisor meetings.
But you don't dictate those meetings when they occur, when they happen?
Correct, my understanding.
We do set the meetings for the other boards and commissions, but that's not what this resolution is before you. This is strictly for the Board of Supervisors right now. If other meetings wanted to be discussed, maybe that's a time during public comment to discuss something in the schedule.
I encourage those boards to, you know, if there was a, you know, a board that felt like they should all meet at a different time, you know, I think whoever is the chair of that board could reach out to liaison or one of us, we can have that discussion. You know, a lot of people, you know, when deciding how to get involved, they look at a couple different organizations they like, and perhaps they settle on one, they're like, oh, my Mondays are great or my Wednesdays are good. So for us to go changing dates or changing times, you know, would just turn over everything. So I don't think that's really necessary, but if the chair of those committees wants to reach out to us, we're happy to have that conversation.
Well, a little bit...
And the other big factor is availability of this room.
Right.
We have so many boards and commissions and so on, it's very difficult to be able to change times and dates because of the availability to have meetings.
And liaison staff, if there's staff that attend, things like that.
Right, and I know for the historical review board for Harv, it is in the morning and it is something that Harv is talking about, the timing of it, because it's hard for some to get there in the morning.
Well...
Since you're talking about it, you may make a public comment, but there are boards that meet at the same nights, specifically Shade Tree meets the same night that Parks and Rec does, and it would seem to me that there are other Tuesdays that are available where Parks and Rec can meet because people on Shade Tree should, if they want, be available to go to Parks and Rec and vice versa. There's a lot of intimate relationships that go on there. And me personally, I would like to attend both of those meetings.
Thank you. Are we good? And we're keeping no changes to this? Okay. Mr. Mallon, will you call the roll?
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Droster?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-02 establishing the township travel and business expense policy for 2020?
So moved, second.
Thank you Chair Nester, again, this is no change to this, we do annually just to have this in place so that any staff that does travel with regards to township business, they understand what the expectation and the policy is set forth. Again, no change from the best previous years to this policy.
Great. Any board comment? Any public comment? Mr. Mallon, call the roll?
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Droster?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes. Moving on to motions. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the replacement of the stucco-faced masonry wall?
Uniform, non-uniform.
Back up. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-03 establishing the township holidays, non-uniformed and non-union employees in 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mallon?
Thank you Chair Nester, yes, this is very important to the staff here at the township. This sets our holiday schedule for 2020 and looking at the holiday schedule, we have generally on normal years, we have 11 holidays on, when there is a presidential election, we are given that as a holiday, the board gives that as another holiday. So in 2020, we have 12 holidays, which also include a floating holiday. The holidays are New Year's Day, Martin Luther King's Birthday, President Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Presidential Election, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, the day after Thanksgiving, Christmas Day, and the floating holiday, which again is no change from previous years.
Very good. Any board comment? Any public comment? Mr. Mallon, call the roll?
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Droster?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes. Okay, now I can move on to motions. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the replacement of a stucco-faced masonry wall at 107 East Germantown Pike?
So moved.
Second.
This is Charlie.
Thank you. This is a replacement for a wall that is both on Germantown Pike and Meeting House Road. It has been in existence for many, many years. It was recently hit by an automobile causing it to have to be replaced. Township staff allowed the applicant to construct it and work on it even while it was being pursued by Harv and before the stewardess acted upon, primarily because it was in dire shape and because it was also the required enclosure for the swimming pool of that property. The wall is very similar to the existing wall that had been there for many years and Harv looked at this at their last meeting and recommended approval at a meeting that was in the December 8th meeting of 2019. I'm sorry, that was December 11th, 2019, and they recommended unanimously to recommend approval of this certificate.
Yeah, and I see the homeowner is here and was at the meeting? All is good?
Yes.
Very good. Any public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to select the township depositories for the deposit of the township funds in 2020?
So moved, second.
Mr. Mallon?
Thank you Chair Nester, again, there's no change to the bank depositories in 2020. Those depositories include TD Bank, which does our general checking services, Pliget, Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, which has interest-bearing accounts for the township, Pennvest, which is Pennsylvania Transferring Invest, which also has interest-bearing accounts. We have also accounts with Sand Tander with certificates of deposit, COD, Great Eastern Management, another COD, and TruMark Financial with a COD. So, again, no change from previous years and those are the ones that are provided to us by the finance department.
Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve Dreslin and Company to audit the township financial statements for 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mallon?
Thank you Chair Nester. This is the second of a three-year commitment with Dreslin and Company to audit the financial statements for 2019. Dreslin does the financial statements for the township, they also do it for William Jeeves Library, both fire companies down in Iron Hill, volunteer fire company, and Spring Mill Fire Company, in addition to the White Marsh Community Ambulance Association. Fees have gone up slightly from year to year, roughly just under 5%, in line with the contract that was agreed upon a year ago with Dreslin. So we have one more year, they'll also do 2020 and then the board can decide if they want to go out for proposals at that time, like we did a year ago.
Very good. Any board comment?
So would we go out during 2020, you're saying we, during 2021? Okay.
Because they're doing the financial statement for 2019.
Right.
And they also have the contract for the financial statement in 2020. So in 2021, we will go out and, if the board, that's up to them at that time if they want to go out and put proposals.
Thank you.
Any other board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Didn't really talk about this, but does anybody want to go to PSATs? Very good. Do I have a motion to nominate Fran McCusker as a voting delegate to the 2020 PSATs conference on behalf of White Marsh Township?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you Fran.
Now we'll move to the public comment period. Do we have any additional public comments? Yeah, sure, come on up. Just state your name please.
My name is John Grant. Two things. One, I was wondering if the township and the Royal Police Department or both has congratulated the new Commissioner, Police Commissioner of Philadelphia. Since it's our neighbor and it's such an interesting appointment and the city has so many problems, I just think it would be good if my township, our township, congratulated the mayor and the new police chief on their efforts to improve situations in Philadelphia.
John, I think that's a great idea. You know, someone that works in criminal justice, someone on a daily basis, I think that's a wonderful idea. Yeah, I see Chief Ward here, we'll talk to him and, you know, we'll think of something. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you. And the other thing is maybe a little more off button. I have just opened up a conversation with Adam in the library by having a discussion about the current situation vis a vis Iran. I know the Constitution has been mentioned here once already and there are all sorts of situations that we could get into and I won't get into them now, but I think this is a bipartisan issue that people in the community can talk about. And I would hope the board and others would at least endorse this and approve of discussion being a good thing and we can have that in the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
If you have any questions about what I read, I'd be glad to. Maybe I left too soon. Maybe we can talk.
Thank you. Any board comments?
Just like to congratulate Vince and JC for joining the board. Excited to have you and really excited to be working together and continue to make White Marsh a great place to live and work and raise a family.
Thank you Fran, look forward to working with all of you.
Yep. Excellent. We didn't technically have an executive session.
We did not have.
We did not, yes. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.